Good evening, Eileen, would you please open up the meeting?
Sure. Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, May 20th, 2024. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 11th, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility has been designed with two emergency exits where it are at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to what the board may legally consider in rendering their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Barillo?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Merton has been excused. Mr. Orozco? I guess he's late or absent, I'm not sure. Mr. Stanton?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Ms. Scottson?
Here.
And Chairman Seiya?
Here.
You have a call.
Great. Will everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Andy, can you please swear in the professionals?
You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Charles Cummliff.
Gerald Freedom. Your professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Eileen, any approval of minutes?
There are no minutes this evening.
Any vouchers?
No vouchers this evening.
Eileen, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, I have a letter from Dennis Galvin. He's the attorney for case number BA-1817A, John Blewett, Inc. He said that they're gonna be revising something on the plans and asked that this application be carried to the next available meeting in June, which is June 22nd, I believe we put him on. Give me one second.
Without further notice as well?
Yes, without further notice, and he granted the board an extension of time for saying to that evening. Yes, I'm sorry, not June, July 22nd, 2024.
So we're looking at July 22nd?
Yes.
Okay. With no further notice and extension to 31 July?
He just says to that date, so July 22nd.
Okay. All right, so anyone that's here for case number BA-18-17Alpha, John Blewett, Inc., this application is being carried to July 22nd with no further notice and extension of time is also July 22nd.
And that is all the comments or correspondence I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next up on the agenda, case number BA-23-21, German Estrada. Bulk variance for as-built pole barn with side yard setback. Application of German Estrada as applicant and owner seeking bulk variance approval as the as-built detached garage located within the required setback, yard setback on premises known as Block 116, Lot 24, 119 West Fourth Street. Extant expiration date, July 2, 2024. Sir?
Yes.
Are you the?
Applicant.
Applicant?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Well, can we have you sworn in, please?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes, I swear.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
German Estrada, E-S-T-R-A-D-A.
The witness is sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So this application was flagged at the time, I guess, that the applicant went to close out his building permit. You're required to submit an as-built to confirm that you built it in accordance with approvals. This is an accessory structure. The setback requirements for accessory structures in this zone are equal to the building height, both to the side and the rear yard. The applicant provided an architectural plan which shows that the building average height, you know, average of the peak in the eaves is 11.83 feet, so that would be the required setback. Mr. Agar is showing the survey, as-built survey that the applicant provided. You can see, it appears to be that there may have been like a layout issue when the foundation for this was installed. You can see at the northeast corner, so that's the lower left-hand side, the structure has a setback of 12.12 feet, which complies with the setback requirement. If you go to the southeast corner, it's 10.49 feet. So there had to be some kind of layout issue. Maybe they measured off the fence instead of actually a survey property line, and that's what we're here today. This is in as-built condition, so it's already out there. The whole reason for the setbacks is so that way you have room for grading and runoff, so you're not impacting neighbors.
What's the zoning on this one?
I think it's the R-50 zone.
R-50. It's in Freewood Acres.
It's off of West Fourth Street.
Okay.
So, you know, they went through and John, right, they submitted their building permit and everything like that, showed it conforming, and it just, there was, appears to be a layout issue. So regarding drainage and runoff and things like that, you know, this is built and it's been there for at least, what, John, four months at this point now? So let's open it up to public at some point and see if there's any concerns from neighbors. If there is, you know, maybe a drywall or the grading could be softened. If not, it could probably remain as-is. Couple of questions I just have. You don't operate a business out of there or anything like that?
No.
Okay. And then as far as, it's just a garage, you don't have any habitable space?
Just for storage, I mean, like, you know, when you cut the grass and all those things, I mean, all the things that run the house.
You might have electric relays in there or something like that, or, okay. And then, just going forward for the future, if, I know the garage has a roll-up door facing the street, so if you are to put in a driveway or want to put one in anytime, just make sure you go through, back to the building department, put a plot plan. There's restrictions on how close the driveway and grading and things like that.
We didn't try to skip no permits, I mean.
No, 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 I'm just saying for the future, you know, if you wanna put in a driveway, it just helps avoid potential concerns from neighbors and things like that and getting all your approvals. And then just to give some clarity for the board, so if they didn't wanna put a driveway, this is R-50, we don't have any impervious coverage restrictions in this zone, so it should be pretty much a formality going to get their approvals for that.
If you check all the papers that I submit on, on the permits, we put 15 feet, but the mason, I mean, they did messed up.
So you hear the applicant's testimony, it was, it looks to be an error with his mason, you know, with the layout of the foundation and things like that. You know, we're talking about the rear, they're off by, you know, one and a half feet, you know, if the guy laid it out perfectly parallel to the lot line, we wouldn't be here tonight. So let's open it up to public unless the board has any questions or concerns and hear what they have.
All right. John, let me hear from you real quick, please?
So as Charlie stated, we have no real issue. It's unfortunate that he's off by the foot and change, but with that being said, we have to enforce the ordinance as written, and it was flagged during the last, the last inspection, which is generally land use, where we checked to make sure that the building is where it's supposed to be, and that's where we discovered the error. So there's no inspection prior to building any kind of structure. We're just, you know, go on the word of the applicant or the, the company that's installing these things, that they're following the plan as submitted and approved. So once again, an error in the layout, we have no issues with this, so it's at the board's discretion.
Thank you, John. Board members?
Yeah, just real fast, is the fence line correct?
So as the survey shows, it, towards the bottom here, it is off by two feet and it's within his property line. So it never crosses over. In fact, towards the back here, it seems to run right along the property line, so he's okay back there. But he totally within his right, that there's no issue with us with that fence being on his property the way it is.
Thank you.
Sam Marie, you have a question?
Mr. Ryan? Eileen, Mr. Orozco has arrived.
Fully noted, thank you.
Matt?
No, I'm good, sir.
Okay. So let's open up the public then.
Make the motion for that.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Eileen, we'll open the public.
At this time, the chairman's opened the hearing up to the public. If anyone has any questions or comments regarding this application, please step forward. You can or you don't have to, it's up to you. You'd have to be sworn in and give your name, so. She's the neighbor.
She's my neighbor.
Ma'am, do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record, spell your last.
Lucio Tangue, T-A-N-G-U-A-Y.
I.
And where do you live?
I live at 109 West Fourth Street, and my son lives at 115 West Fourth Street in Freewood Acres.
When, what do you wanna say about the application?
We have no problem with that. My son couldn't come to the meeting, but he's his next-door neighbor, he's right on his fence line, you know, near, no problem. It's a nice structure, we're pleased with, to see it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. All right, so.
Motion to close.
And no, nobody else from the public? Okay, we had a motion to close, we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen, we're close to public.
Public is now closed for this hearing.
All right, so what's the pleasure of the board then? Yeah, good.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve this application.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We've got a second, a motion and a second.
Is that Mr. Barillo made the second? Mr. Cantor, thank you.
Mr. Cantor.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries, application's approved.
Thank you.
You're done.
All good, Mr. Estrada.
You can call me and I'll let you know what goes on after this, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't wanna get into this again.
Not now, though.
No, not now.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Thank you, take care.
Okay, next case up before the board, case number BA-23-24, Christopher Cap-Saskis. Bulk variance approval to construct a single-family dwelling with septic system and on an undersized lot. Description, application of Christopher Cap-Saskis as applicant and owner seeking bulk variance approval to construct a single-family dwelling with septic system and on an undersized lot in the ARE2 zone. The applicant also proposes an associated driveway, private well, drywall, septic system, concrete walk and covered patio on premises known as Block 183, Lot 62, 555 Brickyard Road. Exploration date, 30 June 2024.
Thank you. Perfect. Okay, perfect, thank you. We have to enter them into.
Sir?
Good evening, Chairman. Kevin Uniglit here on behalf of the applicant. As Mr. Chair mentioned, we're here for a bulk variance approval to construct a single-family dwelling. I'm gonna get right into it, introduce Mr. Wilder from Morgan Engineering. We'll give testimony, we also have the applicant here in the back in case. He has testimony for that. Thank you.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
Matthew Wilder, W-I-L-D-E-R. I am the Engineering Department Manager at Morgan Engineering. It's been a couple of years since I was before this board, it was during the COVID days when everything was done virtually. But aside from being before this board, I've been before probably 65 boards and over 300 applications. I'm a licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, and both of my licenses are active and in good standing.
And what school did you go to?
I went to Rowan University.
Oh, Rowan, okay.
Graduated in 2006.
Great, we accept your credentials.
That's gotta be an NGIT guy.
All right, Mr. Wilder, you, you're up with your attorney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So before I sort of delve into our application, I always like to give like a little brief history of the property itself. So the property is Lot 62 within Block 183, and it's more commonly known as 555 Brickyard Road. The property's on the east side of Brickyard Road, generally across the street from Bree's Way Drive. I have an exhibit that I've provided, if we can pull that up, it's labeled as O3 in the exhibits, the aerial exhibit.
We're gonna make, no, so this is gonna be A7 in ours.
A7?
You're gonna have to.
Oh wait, I'm gonna go last.
Okay.
The purpose of.
We'll have it on here, so.
Yeah.
A7.
Right, so this will be marked A7.
I have several others, is it easier to mark them all now?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So the, going back a step, we have two other exhibits that are buy-sell letters. We provided buy-sell letters to the property to the north, which is developed to the single-family home, and a property to the south, which is, has a very small common property line with the subject property. To the north is 557 Brickyard Road, and to the south is 549 Brickyard Road. To the east of the property, we did not provide a buy-sell letter because that's the stormwater basin for Quail Ridge Estate. So we did provide buy-sells to the two adjacent property, two residential property owners. And those are in my little flash drive, O1 and O2.
Andy, so we're marking those A8 and A9?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Is the property the triangle in the middle?
Yes, sir. And I'll describe the exhibit as I go through that. So, I mean, the next exhibit is a photograph from December of 2022 that just shows the existing home prior to its demolition. The property was fire damaged and had sat and fallen into disrepair following the fire. The applicant had purchased the property, but I just wanted to give the board an idea of how the house appeared when the property was acquired. And then the last exhibit that I have is a site constraints exhibit. And the purpose of this exhibit is, the property is undersized, so I'm just trying to effectuate what the buildable area is on this property if we were completely within the buildable building envelope. And there's some dimensions that's a little bit tough to read, but the purpose of this exhibit is to show that in order to sort of build a conforming lot, you're building about a 600 square foot home depending upon the shape. So it's a very tough site when you consider the area and the shape, and those are the, that's the extent of the exhibits that I have this evening.
Okay, great, thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, so I'll just point out to the board, so I get the exhibit, you know, it's an irregularly shaped lot, there's a buildable lot area that's triangular, that, you know, it's really hard to fit something square in there. There was a previous structure that was fire damaged, we didn't receive a survey of what the footprint of that was prior to the structure being demolished, but the township's code, and Mr. Agar can correct me if I'm wrong, does have allowances for building within the same footprint for fire-damaged structure, so, you know, just to give the board some context, that's, they're, they're here seeking relief for an undersized lot and a number of variances associated with that undersized lot, but, you know, an owner of the property could conceivably build by right within the footprint of the prior foundation without having to come to the board, so I just wanna give the board that context.
If you don't mind going back to my variance plan for a moment. So the variance plan, which is like a plot plan, the variance plan does actually depict in the lower left-hand corner of the property, an existing condition slash demolition plan, which shows the footprint of the prior home. Just for what it's worth, that prior home was 774 square feet. I certainly acknowledge that the town code allows an applicant to rebuild in the same footprint. Current housing trends being what they are, I think the marketability of a property with a 700 square foot home would have some difficulty. So we are proposing a larger home than what previously existed, but considering the surrounding area, and I'll provide the additional testimony, considering the surrounding area and what we're proposing, we think it is appropriate, but that does depict in, let's see, in that area where the existing home was, so you'll notice that the existing home violated the rear yard setback as well, so even a 770 square foot home still wasn't able to comply with the bulk zoning standards for this zone.
How is this property laid out, Charlie? Septic?
So I don't believe there's sewer service area to this site, so they're proposing a septic with the application. Conceivably, there's an existing septic system probably, who knows when it was constructed and what kind of system it is, so a new structure being built here with a compliant septic system to today's code is probably a plus with the application. You know, I'll let Mr. Wilder talk about where they are and their status of, you know, making an application aboard a health and test bits and things of that nature. But, you know, with that, we have different standards, it's not just the underlying zoning standards, if you're, don't have a septic, sorry, you're not serviced by public sewer, the minimum lot area requirements for our code are 40,000 square feet, I think this lot is, yeah, just under 19,000 square feet, so they do need that variance for the lot area. And another layer with that is if you don't meet the minimum lot for septic, you also have to comply with the ARE1's standards for front, side, and rear yard setbacks, so I'll let Mr. Wilder get into his testimony and justification for the relief of those requirements. But as you can see, you know, it's in a triangular, irregularly shaped lot, once you apply those setbacks, you also get a very irregular building footprint with that as well.
And as it relates to the existing septic system, the applicant initially, albeit that picture does sort of speak a thousand words, but the applicant initially did wanna try to rehabilitate that existing structure and enlarge it, but the township requires any structure that's more than 50% damaged has to be demolished. As part of that demolition, he was actually also required to demolish the existing septic system. So we're proposing a new septic system and a new well. I know Mr. Cummliff had a comment in his letter regarding the well and making sure it was encased to a depth of 50 feet, encased in concrete, because we don't provide 100 feet of separation between the septic and the well, and we'll certainly do that. But as it exists right now, you know, the site is, you know, quote-unquote vacant, and we're proposing the improvement as are outlined on my variance plan. So again, the aerial exhibit just sort of shows the surrounding area. I had mainly really prepared this just to show for the buy-sell letters, this is the property owner at 557 Brickyard that we notified, and this is the property owner at 549 Brickyard we notified. The most logical property owner would be this one because we share such an extensive or significant common property line. It's a little bit tough to see on this plan, but there's only about a 35 or 40-foot shared property line with the property owner to the right, but we still wanted to provide that buy-sell letter to, you know, sort of further and demonstrate the hardship. So if you don't mind, let me back to my variance plan. So what we're proposing is a two-story home with a two-car garage and your typical appertinent site improvements. We have an asphalt driveway, we have a covered concrete patio on the south side of the home, and we're also proposing the septic system sort of pushed to the south, and we're also proposing a drywall on the north side of the property. The drywall is located right here, and that's to receive runoff from the roof, and then we have the septic system over here, and then the well is right here. So the, the site is challenging for a number of reasons, ignoring the undersized nature of the property for a second. We also have the issue that a septic system needs to be a certain amount of feet from a drainage basin, and that requirement is 50 feet. You'll notice on the, on the adjacent property to the east, there's the fence that circulates the basin or circles the basin, and it then begins to jog over. At that location, the basin begins to get further from our common property line. So to, to ensure that we have adequate separation for our septic system, we had to push the septic sort of all the way over to the right. And Mr. Cummliff had a valid comment about showing that a drainage basin, and we will show that to make sure that we have that 50 feet of separation. But what is proposed is really typical of a, of a, you know, residential two-story home that you're, you'll see, you know, with new construction. We have a covered front porch, it adds to the street's gate, it makes a very appealing home from the, from the perimeter. And while the house property is currently vacant, the prior home, whether fire damaged or not, I think this is without question an aesthetic upgrade to that. If you don't mind flipping to the constraints exhibit. So again, I sort of gave an overview of the purpose that this plan illustrates, and you'll notice a few dimensions on the plan. So really, you know, the, and the purpose of this exhibit really to show that a conforming lot would be very, very small to fit within these setbacks, and really to demonstrate that, we really tried to pick a home that sort of followed the shape of the property. You know, the property being undersized certainly impacts the developed potential of the property, but also being this uniquely shaped property where so much of the property is encumbered by the front yard setback really sort of squeezes everything in. So while the home is not a, you know, wedge shape like the property is, if you sort of look at it in a, in a sort of global stance, it does sort of kind of follow the shape of the property. You know, we have the largest depth on the left-hand side of the property where the property's the deepest, and as you get further towards the south or to the right, the property, the structure begins to shrink in size to sort of follow the property itself, to not, to sort of work within the setbacks or the confines of this property. So because of the undersized nature of the lot, we do have several variances that we're seeking, and I'll, I'll run through all of them really quick. So for lot area, as Mr. Cummliff indicated, for properties that are undersized, but were legally existing at one point prior to the zoning ordinance, the ARE1 zone requirements apply for lot area and setbacks. So the lot area requirement is one acre, and we're .43 acres, so that is a variance that we require. We also require variance for both all three, front, rear, and side yard setbacks. The front yard required setback is 50 feet, the rear yard required setback is 40 feet, and the side yard required setback is 30 feet. What we are proposing is 35 feet to the front, 20.6 feet to the side, and then 22.4 feet to the rear. We also require variances for impervious lot coverage and building coverage. Our building coverage proposed is 16.3%, and our impervious coverage proposed is 22.9%. So all of these variances are really just a function of the property itself. With the impervious coverage variances and the building coverage variance, it should be noted that those requirements apply to the ARE2 zone. So when you're a septic, when you're an undersized property on septic and you defer to the ARE1 zone, it's only for lot area and then the required setbacks. For the building and impervious coverage, it defers back to the ARE2 zone, which is a two-acre minimum, so when comparing our property to those standards, we're 78.5% undersized. So really, the jux, or the crux of this issue is that the property's undersized, and to build a reasonably sized home, we do need some variance relief.
Okay.
And I just wanna add some clarity to that. So with the building and lot coverage, so our ordinance does have exceptions for like plotted lots that existed prior to 2007, whereas they are subject to whatever their requirements were in place at the time, so go back to prior to 2007, ARE2 didn't have any. So go back to prior to 2007, ARE2 didn't have any requirements or maximum limitations for building a lot coverage. So while I appreciate Mr. Wilder pointing out that, you know, what's today's current standards, they're asking above and beyond that, you know, with that loophole, relief technically is not required for those two. So really, in my eyes, it's just the 40,000 square feet for the lot area, you know, the ARE2 lot area not meeting that, and then the front, the side, and the rear yard setback as far as variances. And, you know, just to give clarity too to Mr. Wilder's point, right? So if you apply this to the 40,000 square foot requirement minimum lot area, for maximum building coverage, they'd be allowed to build up to 4,800 square feet on a conforming lot. I think they're at like 3,000 square feet. For impervious coverage, it would be 6,000 square feet. They're at 4,200 square feet. So if this was a fully conforming 40,000 square foot lot, the size of the structure and things like that are not necessarily like oversized for a normal typical sized lot. So I just want to give that context for the board.
Thank you, Charlie. Does our planner have anything to offer?
Nothing else to add at this point.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So just to sort of finish up the variance testimony, and then I'll finish up going through some comments of Mr. Cunnell's letter. We're seeking these variances that I believe is appropriate under the authority of both the C1 and C2 variance criteria. The C1 variance criteria is most commonly referred to as the hardship variance criteria, and the C2 is the flexible variance criteria. So 40,55 D70C1 of the municipal land use law states where there are an exceptional situation affecting a property, a variance can be granted. In this, I believe we really have two exceptional situations. First is such a significantly undersized lot. Clearly, when you look at the constraints exhibit and what is available to us, it's a challenge. And the second is really the shape of the property. Having just an undersized lot that was rectangular, maybe we could work within those confines, but we have an undersized lot that is incredibly uniquely shaped. That really is the driving force behind the variances that we're seeking. So while I believe this is a clear hardship variance case, oftentimes the C2 variance criteria provides a little bit greater flexibility. And I think this application advances multiple purposes of planning as outlined within the municipal land use law, but also some of the purposes of Howell Township, which is effectuated in their in their master plan. As it relates to the municipal land use law, I believe this application advances goal A, which is the general welfare. The applicant bought the subject property, and as part of this redevelopment, demolished a home that was fire damaged and was nothing short of a blight in the area. I'm sure every neighbor was ecstatic to see that structure come down. Goal E of the municipal land use law is to promote the appropriate population densities to the well-being of New Jersey citizens. Again, and that really ties into goal G, which is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, of which one is residential. So this is a residentially zoned property in a residentially zoned area surrounded by other residentially developed properties. This is where a residential home should be built. And as far back as 1938, when the prior home was built, had a home on it. So this property was developed with a single-family home going back almost 90 years. But I also believe it advances goal I of the municipal land use law, which is to provide a desirable visual environment through good civic design and arrangement. So as I talked about the house and sort of how it's configured, again, the house is sort of shaped in a way that it sort of works with the property itself. And I think when you look at the architectural plans and sort of the front elevation, I believe this will be an improvement to the streetscape. I believe this home will not only will fit in, but will sort of improve the streetscape when you have the standards of new home construction, such as certain gables of the, you know, architectural elements, and the covered front porch. I think this will be an improvement to the streetscape. So that sort of addresses what's the positive criteria. We still need to address the negative criteria. And I don't believe there are any detriments from the variances that we're seeking. As it relates to the rear yard setback, what we're proposing is pretty much what the prior home had. And that offset or that setback is to a detention basin. When you look at the property to the west, the existing home that's constructed at 557 Brickyard has a side yard setback of about 20 feet, based on my measurement, which is again, very consistent with what we're proposing. The same is true for the front yard setback for 557. And I point to that property because that's a similarly undersized property. That's less than four tenths of an acre. It's about 11% more undersized than we are. And as you get further to the north, the properties start to get deeper and larger.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes, sir.
Andy?
Yes, sir.
And the planner. We have the engineer who's licensed on the record, and he's going through
Planning.
Planning testimony, which he did not resent that he was going to do.
Yes, sir.
I thought he indicated he's a licensed planner as well.
Oh, so he can do both?
He can.
Okay.
Did you put that on the record, your planning credentials?
Sure.
I don't remember that.
So I've been a licensed planner since 2018. So I've been a licensed planner for six years. I've done applications everywhere from use variances to applications such as this for a single-family home variances. On the planning side, I've probably appeared before 30 boards on maybe 75 applications. And I've every board I've been before, I've been accepted as an expert to provide planning testimony.
Charlie?
To give clarity to that, so this board in the past on use variance applications has required an AICP, which is a national licensure. This is not a use variance. It's a bulk variance, a C variance, has a certain, a lower burden of proof and standard in terms of MOU also. I wouldn't take issue. I've had Mr. Wilder provide similar testimony in other boards throughout Ocean and Monmouth County.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. Okay. Negative criteria?
Yes. So again, when you consider the surrounding uses where they're constructed, I really see no negative or detrimental impacts to our application. When I was talking about the existing front yard setback, we're generally matching what 557 Brickyard Road has. And if you look further to the north, these two properties are generally in line. So I think we'll have a pretty continuous sort of streetscape when you look at what how the properties appear from the street. So I really see no detrimental impacts from the variances that we're seeking. And then just to really speak to the master plan or the zoning plan, I did review the township's 2022 master plan land use element, and that actually had a specific application to our property. So that spoke to land use recommendation number 10, which said, in the case of existing structure, which is more than 50% damaged, the existing home is required to be demolished. A new home can be built on the same footprint, but if the footprint is expanded, the development must comply with the bulk standard in effect. So I think that the township was attempting to, you know, promote the redevelopment of properties, but when a property or a structure was significantly damaged, rather than trying to save that structure and put a piecemeal structure together, they wanted a brand-new structure that would really enhance the streetscape. So I believe we're doing just that. So with that being said, I do not believe the variances that we're seeking cause substantial detriment to the public good, nor do they impair the intent or purpose of the zone plan or the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So unless I can simply agree that we'll comply with Mr. Cunnell's comments. If you'd like me to go comment by comment through his letter, I'll happily do that as well.
Let me just hit the highlights of it. So our master plan recommends a 50-foot right away for Brickyard Road. There's 41.5 feet, so there's deficiency and a half across the frontage. It's an undersized lot. I don't think we should take right-of-way dedication because that further exacerbates it. But in these instances, we have required roadway widening easements. Is that something that the applicant would be amenable to?
We will, we take no issue with that as long as we can still measure our setbacks to the property line rather than to the roadway.
Yeah. So roadway widening easement, it doesn't impact the bolt standards or anything like that. So it's it just gives the township the ability to widen the roadway, put infrastructure as needed, if there is or ever is a time in the future that they desire to do so.
So we take no issue with providing that easement.
So and then if there's any intent for emergency generators and AC units, you know, those are going to need to be shown on a plot plan at some point in the future. There's ordinance section 188-19, which talks about emergency generators, noise, air light, open space, all that kind of stuff. Bedrooms, there's are there any bedrooms in the basement?
There are no bedrooms in the basement or the habitable attic, and we take no issue with the deed restriction of the same.
So Charlie, how many bedrooms were in the first, in the burnt-out structure? Do you know?
I do not believe that their plan indicates that. Mr. Wilder maybe can provide some testimony?
There were there were two bedrooms, a small kitchen, and then like a utility room. And we're proposing four bedrooms, and the septic system is being designed for that. And again, we take no issue with a deed restriction that there's no basements, no bedrooms in the basement or in the habitable attic.
Are you going to show us an architectural of what you plan on putting in?
Architectural plans were submitted. We can bring those up. I will do my best to just simply refer to them. So this is the front elevation of what the applicant intends to build. Mr. Cunnell did have a question regarding on the right side of this plan. There's some cabinetry in that covered patio. I can provide a little bit of clarity. That really is just going to have some cabinetry, a sink, and then a small refrigerator. We're not going to have anything under that covered patio for cooking. It's more just sort of a little bit of an outdoor entertainment space. This is the right side elevation. If you're standing on the, you know, from the south looking north, there's two patio doors that provide access to the, no, this is the right elevation, excuse me. So again, the architectural elements continue from the fronts all the way around the house. This is the rear elevation. You see additional patio doors.
Complying with the height requirement here, Charlie?
I believe so, John. What does it say in the architectural there? I didn't flag them as such. So our, I think 35 feet is the maximum permitted here. Where are they to the ridge there, John?
35?
Yeah. So and we're average for building height. So it's the average of the eaves and the ridge. So if the peak is 35 feet, they're below that.
Okay.
The like French doors that you kind of have in the back there, there's four sets of them. Are you putting any patios associated with it?
We're going to have a landing, and the impervious coverage number that I indicated at 22.9% does include a landing out of those doors. That was an oversight on my part is we didn't show a concrete landing outside of those doors. So that 22.9 just includes a very small landing outside of those French doors.
Okay. Okay, Charlie, you're on still. You're going through your.
So I would, I would just say, if there's any intent to put something a little bit bigger of a patio other than a landing, maybe Mr. Wilder can put some testimony on the record on some kind of a footprint now. So that way, even though there's no impervious coverage restrictions, it is an undersized lot. We can kind of hear what that size patio might be so we could get it in a resolution so they wouldn't have to come back to the board if the board were to look favorably on this application.
Sure. So right now, the way this site's been designed, we do have some outdoor entertainment space, and we sort of pushed it to the right-hand side. Ideally, I'm sure any potential buyer, whether the applicant intends to build this home for himself, or if it's sold to a new developer, they might appreciate some additional outdoor space that's maybe not directly visible from the street. So I do believe that additional, additional impervious coverage in the rear would provide a little bit more privacy for property owners to occupy that outdoor space. And I had assumed an 18 by five landing. I think a 10-foot deep patio in that area would certainly be appropriate. And I could tell you the additional impervious coverage would bring us up to just over 30%. So the variance we'd be seeking would say call it 30.5%. And that would give us an 18-foot wide patio that's about 10 feet deep. I think that would be more than appropriate for any potential.
So I'll leave that to the board's discussion discretion. I only ask the question now, I just, we're here seeking all the relief as part of the application, you know, 22% versus 30% on an undersized lot.
No, I apologize. Hold on. 20, that's not right then. Hold on. See, you make an engineer do calculations in the spur of the moment, we fall flat. 23.5%. I apologize. So it goes to 23.33. That extra one tenth of a percent would help me to make sure I didn't make another calculation error. So 23.5%. I apologize.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, there is no impervious coverage restriction for this. It is an undersized lot. Usually on an undersized lot, you're concerned about the runoff going to neighboring properties and, you know, grading and things like that. You know, maybe we can hear from public if there's anyone's particularly concerned, or if anyone has an existing drainage concern, maybe that may be something for the board to weigh in their consideration on whether or not they take exception to the additional patio. I just bring it up because, you know, we see a lot of these, especially with like pools and things like that, and a contractor comes in and tries to sell you additional, because I'm already out here. And then, you know, inevitably, we see people here on as-built, you know, coming back to get approval for something when we could have just maybe hashed it out as part of the hearing for the application. And then just a couple more comments. With all the septic in the well, we just asked a question because it's a tight site, right? Ultimately, it's subject to Board of Health review and approval, their review for separation distance to wells and septic on other properties and things like that. So they'll have to get Board of Health approval. Have you done any preliminary testments just for like water table? I know you're proposing the basement as well.
So we haven't done testing that would qualify for the Monmouth County Board of Health. So we certainly will provide that. We wanted to have this meeting because if the board were to change the size of the house or the location of the house, the requirements are that the test pits really need to be within the footprint of the septic system. So based on the soils data that I reviewed, based on the NRCS web soil survey, I don't, I'm not concerned about the soils being subpar for the for the design of a gravity septic system. And with this board's approval, the very next step would be that we perform that soils testing witnessed by Monmouth County and design the septic system.
John?
Can I, may I ask, the existing house and the existing septic, do you know if there's any issues?
I'm not aware of any issues. My, my client purchased the property when it was no longer habitable. And from what I understand, the prior owner was not the best resident in town. So we're not aware of whether the existing septic had any issues. But again, if we come back and do some soils testing, and it unexpectedly is poor, there are things we can do. We can do pressure dosing. We can do fill and close. We can provide pre-treatment. All of that would allow us to shrink the footprint of the septic system. So again, I have no concerns about designing a septic system to accommodate this development.
So what I'll say is because it is an undersized lot, and the septic system is quasi in the front yard area because it's irregularly shaped. When water table is high, there's separation distance from the bottom of the field to water table. You know, sometimes there's a need to mount the septic system. That can kind of look a little out of whack on a small lot. So I would just say if the test pits and the septic design requires mounting, that the board require the applicant to come back to the board for that, just because every foot you go up on an undersized lot, it's less room for grading, swells, and things like that, ameliorating, you know, concerns from neighbors as far as runoff. So knock on wood, test pits are good. Water table's not an issue, and they don't have to come back. But if there is, and this has to go up two feet, and the whole site has to go up two feet to make it look like a normal house and lot, you know, I think that gives us another bite at the apple.
You know, we don't want this sticking out like a sore thumb in the neighborhood, right? So what do we have in the area?
I mean, the common houses in the area are not that, not that different from it. They're very, you have a lot of age difference in that neighborhood, or in that area. So we have some houses that look comparable-ish to this, but then you also have some that are older, and then you have some that are older grandios. So it really is a wide.
That's a mix, yeah. Okay.
For what it's worth, I did drive the area. I don't know just simply by driving the area where all the septic systems are, but I did not take notice of any of any mounted septic systems that sort of stuck out. And again, if the concern is that the township doesn't want a mounted system, there's things we can do to sort of address that. So I'm confident that we'll be able to provide a septic system that does not detract from what we're trying to accomplish with the aesthetics of this property.
And I mean, from an aesthetic perspective, right? It's in the ARE agricultural rural estate zone. What they're proposing is kind of like your farmhouse-style facade finish. So would it look like it fits in in like Manasquan or something like that? Probably not. But for, you know, this part of Howe, where it's a little bit more rural, you know, I think the aesthetic fits in. It's really just a matter of, you know, the scale and it being undersized is kind of what they're here for. And then just a couple more comments that I just want to clear. So you'll provide a calculation for the water quality stone for that dry well?
Yes, sir.
All right. And then any utilities? Should any new ones be required? You know, you'll have to obtain any road opening permits for those utilities. And then it's over 5,000 square feet of disturbance, so they need real soil, and you have no issue addressing the plot details?
That is correct.
I think that's really all I have.
Board members?
I think that's really all I have, Mr. Chair.
Board members? Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Wilder?
Yes?
Mr. Conlap's letter of completion. He showed minimal lot coverage, twenty-two point four, and he was showing eighteen point two. As well as the maximum building coverage, he showed sixteen-one, he showed thirteen point, so how are we gonna...
So, the building coverage, we inadvertently excluded the covered patio on the south side of the home, as it relates to the total impervious coverage, I believe my designer just had a, had a drafting error. So, should it have happened? Absolutely not, but unfortunately it did, but prior to this meeting, I specifically checked all of these numbers myself, and the numbers that I presented to you this evening are the accurate numbers that we're, that we're proposing.
So, lot coverage in Gotham, now is that twenty-two point nine?
So, twenty-two point nine, if the board so sees fit to allow us to have a patio in the rear, and, as was pointed out, the impervious coverage is not actually a variance, but if we wanted to just include a patio in the rear, we'd be looking at twenty-three point three percent, I Xed to round it up to twenty-three point five, but that would allow for some outdoor space in the rear of the home as well. And then, the, the building coverage, as I indicated, was sixteen point nine percent.
Mr. Chair, I apologize, just two last things, so, the residential driveway, you'll comply with the ordinance requirement, if it's asphalt, it'll comply with the section, or if it's concrete or pavement, it'll comply with the ordinance requirements?
Yes.
And then, uh, we have required on similar applications, either the applicant provide curbing and sidewalk across the property frontage, uh, if the board is not inclined to require that, because it doesn't fit with the character of the neighborhood with, you know, similar frontages, the board can grant a waiver, but the applicant's required to pay into a fund, um, so I'll leave that up to the board's discretion, so it's either they install it now, or it doesn't fit in, and they make contribution to the fund, and then the township, someone in the future has some other areas in town where it might be more practical and applicable, they have, you know, the fund to dip in to do that, so...
Andy, you wanna say something?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman, other than it's gonna be up to the board whether it wants to, you know, grant, approve the house as is, or propose any changes.
Okay. Do we wanna open this up to public? John, you have something?
Uh, the only thing I have is, if the board so approves it, that it stipulates that any open violations, which I'm aware of, one in looking into the system, there was a property maintenance issue and a summons that was issued in regards to that, and that's just based on some garbage that was either left there, blown on there, or it's on the property, they attempted to contact you, I don't know if, maybe they didn't have the updated information, but I'll provide you the name of the inspector that's been out there, and you can work that out with them, and all we're asking is that, that just be taken care of.
Absolutely, yep, without saying.
Okay. Do we wanna open this up to public?
Motion to open up public.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think we're gonna open this up to public.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public, if anyone has any questions or comments regarding this application, please step forward.
Andy, we have two. Are you both together, or are you... Okay, so we'll...
One at a time.
One at a time, then, please?
If you could step up to the podium, so we can get you on the record, please?
You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. Please state your name for the record.
Todd Wiener.
And can you spell your last name?
W.E.I.N.E.R.
And, uh, what's your address?
Five forty-nine Brickyard Road.
The witness is sworn, Mr. Chair.
You can, you can raise that mic, so you don't have to, there you go, thank you.
Sir, question for the planner slash engineer?
I don't have any questions, I would like to just make a short statement.
Okay.
I live on the adjoining property, I live on, basically an acre or a little less, my house is twenty-four hundred square feet, that is reasonable, but this, what this proposal asks is to put a thirty-four hundred square feet, another thousand square feet, larger than my big house, on this tiny little lot, this is not reasonable. The septic system, they're going, this huge septic system that is right on my property line, is not good, is not going to be good for the environment, this house will, is not going to improve the quality of life for anybody in that area, this house is not reasonable for the size of the lot, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
Say your name for the record?
Daniel DeLigati.
And spell your last?
D.E.L.L.I.G.A.T.T.I.
And where do you live?
Five-five-seven, so, a little bit north.
Okay.
Although I don't really have concerns about building, I appreciate adding the value, I am concerned about the distance between the property line and my property line, twenty feet is pretty close, takes away a lot of the privacy, I don't know if we have the option or ability to work on anything to provide, maybe there's some different structures to help with the privacy, going from a seven-hundred-square-foot house to thirty, to thirty-three-hundred is pretty significant, would be an adjustment, but yeah, that privacy is, and then also the distance from my property line to the new, pretty concerning.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Could we point out one of these gentleman's houses on that chair?
Hi, Ken, Mr. Wiener's property is this property here, and then, Mr. DeLigati's property is this property here.
And how big is that property?
His property?
How big is your house?
Seventeen hundred square feet, it's like... It's more of, the way that the new construction would be angled, the back part would be basically, like, very close to that tree line there, that, like, outer backyard would butt up pretty close to each other.
Those are provided?
Yeah.
So those are gonna grow up pretty tall, right?
I hope so, the year don't even...
They started a little, there, you can see it.
The applicant is also willing to put a six-foot privacy fence along the common property line, if that is a concern, we get proposed evergreen trees, I don't know if we need evergreen trees to back up to evergreen trees, I think in this circumstance, the privacy fence would probably be more useful, but we, we have no issue doing that to address Mr. DeLigati's concerns.
We've heard you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Going from seven-hundred to thirty-four-hundred?
I mean, it is an increase from the structure that's there, um, you know...
Can we reduce the footprint?
So, I mean, certainly, it's up to the applicant whether to reduce it if they, if they want, I mean, do they need the covered patio with the, um...
They're putting a basement in?
They are putting in a basement as well, contingent on, you know, test pits for water table and everything being amenable to that, you know, they can't have a basement in, in the water table, you know, so...
So, my only question, I was gonna ask this earlier, so I'll ask it now in light of the testimony, is there a reason why this house needs to be this big?
So, when the applicant initially bought this property, he bought it for his family, the process has been a little bit longer than he anticipated, at the time, he had, I believe, a two-year-old, and his wife was pregnant, so he was looking to buy the property, and, and when he contacted, when he acquired the architectural plan, it was to sort of serve his, his growing family. I certainly understand the concerns of, of both of the neighbors, I just, do you mind going back to the area a little bit for me? Just to sort of address Mr. Wiener's concerns, so, our septic field is in this area, our septic field is forty feet from the nearest portion of the property line of Mr. Wiener's property, and I'm losing my light, but Mr. Wiener's property is sort of immediately east on this plan, or south of this, of the existing stormwater basin, significantly set back from the property. So, as far as Mr. Wiener's property and this property is concerned, to see the back of this property, if you're concerned about the size of the property, you're looking past all of the vegetation that surrounds that existing basin, and, again, I certainly appreciate Mr. DeLigati's point, but what we're proposing is a home that we believe is appropriately sized for the area, if the question is, can this home be made smaller, the answer's always yes, I can't say definitively that the home can be made smaller, but I can say is that what we're proposing, we believe is appropriate for the area, and we think it would fit in well, and, you know, we're certainly open to have some additional conversation or discussion, but...
My concern is, undersized lot, very large septic system for a thirty-four-hundred home.
So, the size of the septic...
It's, it's something we haven't done in North Howe for a long time, you know, we've gone from ARE two to ARE six for these reasons, ARE three, so that we can get the septic fields away from the residents, and here you're proposing to drop a big septic field right in the middle of this area.
So, even if we were to reduce the size of the home in square footage, the septic field is based on the number of bedrooms, so it would still more than likely be a four-bedroom home, just because that is really the going rate for housing trends, I mean, are there three-bedroom homes, homes there are, they're not as desirable, so even if we squished everything into a smaller footprint, our proposal would still likely be for a four-bedroom home, which would really not change the size of the septic field.
Go ahead, Mr.... Please, Mr. Cantor, go ahead.
My concern is that two of the adjacent neighbors have expressed concerns with the property, and I think they have a right as neighbors to expect that the board comply with the township's regulations, I mean, they, they do have homes that are existing.
I agree with Glenn, I mean, it also doesn't seem that, although you guys say the size fits the area, the neighbor's houses are, I'm not gonna say significantly smaller, but far less than thirty-four-hundred square foot, it, in my opinion, it does not fit the area.
Yeah, I mean, and to elaborate on what I was explaining earlier about the style of homes in that area, there are, you have your original homes, and then you have some of the more grandiose homes, but they fit the property, so I'm gonna add that into it, it does fit the property, which is why I'm asking if there is any reason why the house needs to be that big, 'cause quite frankly, you could be a smaller house and still do, if he's deciding to sell this as a resale, he might do okay with it, but not, but, but again, that's entirely his call, if he's planning on living there, and this, and he can reduce the square footage, either way, I don't see a reason why it can't be reduced.
Could we have, maybe like a five-minute moment, talk to my client?
Aileen, we're gonna take a ten-minute break.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, we never close public.
Oh, thank you.
I'll make a motion to close public.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aileen, we're closing the public.
Okay, the public is now closed, and the board's gonna take a five-minute recess.
Ten minutes.
Ten-minute recess, they'll be back at eight fifteen.
Aileen, we're back.
The board will now reconvene?
We certainly appreciate affording us a few minutes to speak with my client, hopefully we have a proposal that the board will, will appreciate, so, we will reduce our building coverage from sixteen point nine percent to thirteen point five percent, and to, to accomplish that, the covered patio on the right side or the south side of the home will simply be a patio, it will no longer be covered, which means no cabinets, no sink, fridge, all of those things, and then additionally, we'll reduce the size of the home and footprint by three-hundred-and-eighty-one square feet, which is about a seven-hundred-and-ninety, give or take, square foot reduction in living space, so the result would be just over twenty-six-hundred square feet, so, hopefully, you know, understanding, we certainly wanna be good neighbors, but at the same time, we do wanna make sure that we have enough room for four-bedroom homes, which is current housing trend, so hopefully, at twenty-six-hundred, a little over twenty-six-hundred square feet, the board thinks this would more fit in, in the area and on this property.
You know, the board is still concerned with the size of the, the septic field that you're showing, and the only way to make that smaller is to reduce the bedrooms, you had a two-bedroom on there, if you made it a three-bedrooms, it'll be a smaller field, and we might be able to get there with the reduction in the size of the lot.
So, I mean...
The building size, yeah.
The septic system will meet all of the required setbacks from property lines, from the drainage basin to the east, from the well, because again, the well will be encased in concrete down to a depth of fifty feet, so the septic system would meet all the requirements, as Mr. Conlap indicated, if the board wants to avoid the need for a mounded septic system due to high groundwater, and if that turns out to be needed for the design, we'd have to come back before this board, but as far as the septic system that I'm anticipating constructing on this property, when you drive by this property, will simply be lawn area, the, the septic system will, will not be visible, with the exception of cleanouts at the four corners, we, we do believe that in, in the current market, that four bedrooms is important, there are other things that we can do to reduce the size of the septic system, such as doing a pressure dosing system, where you put a pump tank after the, the septic tank to reduce the size of the system, but again, I mean, my, my position or my, my thought is that it, it's just going to appear as lawn area, so, and again, it meets all the required setbacks for a septic system, so we would really like to maintain the four-bedroom home, just because it's really, the current housing market is, is, that's really what is appropriate.
Did anybody check prior oil tanks and cesspools in that property? Because figure, nineteen thirty-eight, chances are, there was at least one or both.
So, as part of the demo process with the building department, there's a checklist for all those types of items that the person who's demoing the structure needs to provide, so it's a, it's a checklist of border health, tanks, making sure that all, all that stuff has been appropriately abandoned or taken care of.
Charlie, I'd like to confirm, does he meet all of the setbacks and requirements for the current proposed septic tank?
So, as far as the septic system, uh, you're required to be ten feet from a property line, they comply with that, you're required to be...
So it does comply?
Yes, so certainly, we'll reduce in the number of bedrooms, reduce the footprint of the septic field, yes, my recommendation would be to the board, you know, you're hearing the applicant put representations on, like, reducing the footprint and not a covered patio and things like that, I would say, especially since there's concern residents and neighbors, like, we, as a board, would wanna see what that reduction in the footprint might do to the building layout and how that impacts the setbacks, you know, if you're shaving it off of the one side of the structure, does that mean that, you know, twenty-foot side yard setback is twenty-four or something like that, maybe it's making the condition a little bit better for the neighbor who was concerned about the proximity to, to his property, um, you know, and that does give the applicant some more time to maybe think about the comments that he's heard from the board members regarding the size of the development and the size of the house and the number of bedrooms, and, you know, weigh that appropriately and come back with a revised plan.
I agree with Charlie. Yeah. We're on board.
So, what would be the next hearing date that we'd be eligible? Oh, no, I got the side eye with that question.
The board's schedule is not pretty. You are probably looking at focus twelve.
Give you a chance to clean up the property too, take care of that violation. That's, that's one of the things.
It takes up smaller surface space, so I had a...
We might be able to try to squeeze you in June tenth.
You can adapt, like, your shield...
June tenth?
That's our next meeting.
Different technologies, like, my old septic, now I'm sore.
Otherwise, you're looking...
I wish I could say yes to that, but working with an architect...
You can reduce its size and structure with home and treatment system.
We certainly don't wanna put the board, you guys do a lot of...
Reduce it at the rate?
Yeah.
But we know that there are options.
I'm assuming.
Sounds like it could.
Yeah. I just know that.
Mr. Chairman.
No, it's not bad, I know.
Hey, Paul, we're, we're, we're good for, they're good, August 12th.
All right, so there's, there's discussion here as well. And we, we, you know, we'd like for you to consider all options, right? And that is leaving the piano, leaving the patio and reducing the house.
Yeah, patio's nice.
You know.
Aesthetically, it's a beautiful house.
Yeah.
Understood. So just so, you know, when we, you know, look at plans and discuss architecture, just to make sure we don't come back before this board and have the same conversation, is 2,600 square feet unappealing to the board?
I think that's going to depend on the residents, the neighbors' perception of it, but I, I mean, I think you're making a valid attempt.
Okay.
My opinion.
We got one house at 25, another one at 17.
Yeah.
Sure.
That's a whole cape.
Yeah, I mean, I think you guys are making a great attempt to appease everybody.
Sure. And for what it's worth, as it relates to maybe the position of the house, to the east of us is a stormwater basin. So maybe we can sh, shift the house away from the residence, but violate the rear yard setback a little bit more because we're abutting a resident, a stormwater basin instead of a residence.
That appears to be a path forward.
Okay.
Charlie?
Yeah, I mean, you've heard representations about shrinking the, the structure. I mean, you know, it still comes back to the boards. It seems like there was a concern with the number of bedrooms being proposed, like, that is something that they're going to have to weigh when they come back, you know? Yeah, I get it, you know, there's a condition or agree to a deed restriction on no habitable basement and, you know, no habitable attic. The attic space does have dormers, you know? Code enforcement isn't out there, or fire department's not out there doing fire inspections on every single residential structure to see whether or not people are converting space to bedrooms and things like that. Certainly eliminating a bedroom from the floor plan if something does get done after the fact, you know? At least we know there's one less bedroom on what's shown on the floor plan.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, so this application, case number BA 23-24, Christopher Cap Soskis. This application is being carried to August 12th?
Yes.
With no further notice.
And extend your time into August?
We agree to waive the time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next up in front of the board, case number BA 24-019.
It's actually, excuse me, that's a typo, it's actually 2409.
2409?
Yes, thank you.
Lead Inc., Law Enforcement Against Drugs and Violence Temporary Use Permit. Description, application of Lead as applicant and AA Martell Howell LLC. As owner, seeking a temporary use permit to utilize the parking lot adjacent to the Escape Movie Theater to host a Lead Fest, Festival Carnival, including amusement rides, game booths, and food stands. The applicant indicated the event will be in, in a self-contained space within the parking lot enclosed by a six-foot-high fence with strict security measures in place with 24-hour supervision on premises known as Block 25, Lot 54.06, Route 9, and Lanes Mills Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your professional staff, members of the public. My name is Peter Klausert, I'm an attorney with the firm Heilbronn Pape. I'm Ken Pape's partner. You're used to seeing him a lot more than you are seeing me, although I've had the pleasure of being in front of this board a number of times in my career. The description that you identified, Mr. Chair, is, is perfect for the application. So where there's a procedure by which we come before the zoning board, because you're a board that's familiar with land use and how different uses work, and we ask for you to make a recommendation to the Township Council to allow the temporary permit, and then the council, we have to appear, the council is actually the, the entity that issued the, the permit. So what we're looking for from this board is a recommendation to the council that you're comfortable, along with, if there's any conditions that we come across here, which there are, to comply with certain other reports, to the council, those conditions and your recommendation, that's what we're asking for. Lead is the law enforcement against drugs. I have two witnesses this evening, John Finkel, who's a rep with Lead, you can tell by the shirt he's wearing. And then we also have Jeff Albert, who's got a wealth of experience in actually running these type of events for the carnival company that's hired. So Lead hires a company to come and put on the carnival, raise funds for drug awareness for the Howell Police Department, and, and then they handle the, the setup and the, and the breakdown and the operations. And from speaking with Mr. Albert, he certainly seems like he has an awful lot of experience in this area. So if I could, I'd like to have both John and Jeff sworn, and then I'm going to ask for John to take us through a little bit about what we're doing, and then that way they'll both be sworn and they can answer questions as they come at the same time.
Mr. Klausert?
Yes, sir.
I was going to ask you, do we have the permission of the Green Leaf Shopping Center?
Yes, and I think that's something that Mr. Finkel can speak to.
Okay, good, okay.
Yes.
Do you swear the test among the people will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Please state your names for the record and then spell your names.
John, you start, please.
John Finkel, I work for Lead, F-I-N-K-L-E.
I'm Jeff Alberts, I work for Ride Hopper Shows, A-L-B-E-R-T-S.
The witnesses are sworn.
Thank you, sir.
So, John, if you could, just share with this, you know, your role with Lead and, and what we're proposing here. We did have one question already from the chair about our permission to be on this site.
My, my name is John Finkel, like I said, and I am a regional director for Lead. I am here because our CEO, Nick DeMaro, cannot be, so he asked me to step in for him. We have worked with, with Howell, we are Drug and Violence Prevention Program. Lead stands for Law Enforcement Against Drugs and Violence. We are a K through 12 drug and violence curriculum that we provide to train police officers and educators to go into the schools and teach our curriculum, which is a 10-week course. With that, like I said, we, Howell has been with us since our inception 10 years ago. We've had a strong working relationship with, with Howell. And we are a 501(c)(3) and a charity. And one of the ways that we raise money is through fundraisers, and we've been working with the organization here for quite a few years, I believe. We, we've been doing this nationwide and we have a strong presence in New Jersey because that's where we started our, our company.
Okay.
Do you, are you comfortable sharing with the board a little bit about what the Lead Fest is, what it is that you're proposing as part of this carnival?
Sure. So, so what the Lead Fest is, it's a, we, we do a, an area in, in usually the parking lot areas. We do have it on county fair property areas as well, all right? But what we do is we set up, we, we worked with them and we set up the carnival, and we raised the funds there to be able to support our program and support the programs that we were working with, while Howell is one of them.
Jeff, do you think you could share with the board a little bit about your experience in this area and, and maybe what, give us a little bit of a picture of how the site operates, security, things of that nature?
I've been with our company for 44 years. My brothers were bosses before then. I graduated high school and ran away with the carnival by choice. I wanted to do that my whole life, I enjoyed it. Basically, we, the, the fencing is usually eight foot, I heard that six foot. Usually we, when we rent it from Long Fence and all, it's eight foot, if that helps. We have a controlled area that the fencing gets put up. Only time it's not there, when we're bringing all the semi trucks in to spot everything, to put the rides where they go. It's organized so you can drive the fire trucks, police are there all the time. We have our people on, our management on at all times for security 24 hours a day. Our people that work for us live on site at certain places, some not. We have a controlled access for a gate, we charge admission, Lead does, so we keep the riffraff out. And we have, you know, the rides are put periodically where they want to go to kind of keep the flow going. Every lot, every fairgrounds, carnival lot is a certain area that you have. This lot is about 300 by 300, Nick told me, and so that will give us plenty of room for access points and egress.
And the plan is to have the parking for the carnival in the same area of that, that parking area, of, of the parking lot that the carnival's going to be in? That can provide sufficient parking for this use?
Yeah.
Okay. And, I'm sorry.
Okay. You want to continue, go ahead.
Well, the next question I was going to ask was for, for John. You, you have created a relationship with the property owner here, you have an agreement in place to utilize this property?
Yes.
And in addition to that, i, if necessary, if on our self-contained lot area, there isn't sufficient parking, you have permission for overflow parking?
On the adjacent area, yes.
On the adjacent lot, if necessary? Okay. That was what I wanted to get to.
Okay. So lavatories, first aid stations, how does that work?
Yes, so we've secured with, let me just go to my notes here. I believe you have all these, these notes that were emailed to you today, but as far as the lavatory goes, let me just.
This was emailed to the board late this afternoon, this package, so, yeah. I figured it'd be easier if they just looked at it.
So we do have temporary lavatory units, including handicapped accessible units that will be coming to the property. We will be maintaining, you know, one of the things that Nick basically told me is to, to stress to you is we maintain something that's very clean, very sanitary, all right? And up to standards of everybody that has requested our, you know, our, our response here. But we do have plans, I do not have the, the vendor that we're dealing with for the, for the lavatory, but we, we are having temporary lavatories.
But they're like Portageon type, kind of, and they're not, they're serviced whenever they need to be serviced if they're full during activities, correct, right?
Yep.
They're serviced usually every day, if not every other day, for sure.
And then the first aid station, is there one there, or?
I believe there is a first aid station.
With us, we have, I don't, David's, David's first aid certified. I don't know if we have, it's usually what is required from the place that we play, if we have paramedics on site, things like that. I can't.
We will have police officers on site. A good portion of our staff are retired police officers as well for first aid. As far as if we are having a first aid squad, is that your question, the first aid unit?
No, just someone trips, falls, scratches their knee, I mean, you know, a little Mercurochrome, you know, Band-Aid, right? I mean.
I haven't heard Mercurochrome in years. That was the red stuff, right? The red stuff, my father used to paint flowers on my.
Charlie, you said we have, we have a lot of questions here because we're going to get this over to council, right? So we want to make sure we vet this properly to council.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're not acting on this in like a resolution or anything like that, we're just making recommendations to the governing body. So, you know, I had a, I don't issue usually letters this length for a temporary use permit, but the plan we got was just a box on a parking lot with not a whole lot going on from, like a site circulation purpose. So as far as the entrance, so there's a main kind of circulation driveway coming off of Lanes Mill Road. When you say the gate for the carnival, where, where's the anticipated gate location? Is it going to be like coming from the Escape Movie Theater side? Is it going to be?
I don't know the exact land layout on this one myself. What usually, could you go back to where that little blue box was? That would help me kind of describe it. If, to the left, to the right, my right, that's the movie theater?
Mm-hmm.
So the, the front, say by the letter L, that would be the entrance to the carnival itself, and then they have queue lines, metal detectors we set up, and then the people would walk in and have one way in, one way out.
Okay. Yeah, so, you know, the, the reason I ask that question is like if the entrance is like directly abutting that main throwaway into the shopping center, you know, the BJ's is going to be active, the LA Fitness is going to be active, having it further away.
The jump zone is there too?
Yeah, yeah, the climb zone's still there. So having it further away from that main circulation driveway, you know, prevents maybe the possibility of like vehicles queuing or like a line forming, you know, impacting circulation. It's all going to be within the parking bays, right? There's not going to be any infrastructure gates like blocking off any of the stripes, fire circulation lanes or anything like that.
Correct.
So, and I know the fire official issued a memo regarding like the need for like a, like a carnival permit for the state, is that something that's in the process of being obtained or submitted for?
I'd say we have it because we're playing carnivals in New Jersey now.
Okay. As far as the operation, you know, with the Escape Movie Theater, there was some history with noise complaints and concerns regarding neighboring property owners because there's residential bond, everything like that. Our noise ordinance at 10:00 PM, there's a change in the decibels, is live music and stuff will cut off.
Live music will end at 10.
Okay. And then, you know, there's a grace period for an hour when like things are winding down and people are kind of like leaving the site, right?
Wait, wait, timeout. Live music, there's going to be live music?
No.
No, not.
The rides.
Oh, ride music?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, there, there may be like a PA announcer or something like that for whatever.
Concert.
Yeah. What else did I have there? You said 24-hour security and everything like that. So when you say parking on our lot, you're talking about the, the bank of parking immediately adjacent to the Escape Movie Theater? Is there any of like where the BJ's in the climb zone, like you're?
There's not going to be a ton of parking left in front of Escape.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. So can you, like, how many people do you usually get for these kind of events?
During the weekdays, 6, 800.
You're not going to have parking.
What are the days and ti, dates and times for this?
July 27th.
I mean, listen, we do shop, I mean, Shop With A Cop, or not Shop With A Cop, Howell National Night Out was there. The place was packed, you couldn't park anywhere, and there wasn't 800 people showing up to that. And that was one night, and it was a disaster. Not a disaster, but that's, that's a lot of cars.
So, I mean, that's why they're here and that's why.
Without a lot of parking.
And that's why we're asking all these questions, you know? The Escape Movie Theater, right? You know, they're going to be using a certain amount of that for the actual carnival.
It looks like the majority of the parking there.
Grounds and, and then, you know, the, the site has been built out for a while and some of the striping is a little faded, so, you know.
LA Fitness across the way, and I take it all of the BJ's parking lot is going to be, yeah.
The area that's.
Well, I don't know if they're in agreement with the people who own the property, but they have that fenced, that fenced off area that's, they haven't started the construction, that, that still has all kinds of parking. I don't know.
Yeah, but I don't even think that's that big. I mean, National Night Out, it was an hour line to get in?
Yeah.
And a three-hour line to get out of traffic.
It was bad.
Yeah, no, it was just.
Listen, I'm all for law enforcement and all that, but I don't know if there's enough space there.
But we do have agreements with the property owner that we can overflow into the other lots. It's, we're not solely reliant on the lot that's in front of Escape. We have permission to have overflow parking into those lots.
Even the lot that's fenced off?
I don't know about the lot that's fenced off, I don't know what that is.
And we also are.
What are the hours of, what are the hours of operation? Because I'll assume this is going to be operating while LA Fitness is and BJ's is as well.
During weekdays, normally 5 to 10. Weekends, 1 to 11.
BJ's closes at 8:00.
Yeah, BJ's closes at 8:00.
Yeah. 1 to 11?
That's a great part of BJ's, huh?
Solution might be to get permission from the lows across the street and then hire policemen to help people cross the street.
That's, that's.
That's a bad.
Shuttle buses.
Even, even crossing over from LA Fitness.
Shuttle buses from outside parking.
It sounds to me like coming from this board, maybe one of your recommendations as the council is to make sure that we properly demonstrate that we have sufficient parking in place.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it's not something that we saw this evening, but it's something that you say, hey, pay attention to this, and then make sure we have a plan when we go there.
So, and to, to council's point, right? So the ordinance. So, uh, the ordinance allows them to seek a temporary use permit for up to a maximum of two years and then they can come back for an extension of up to the initial two years. Certainly within a recommendation to say to the board, uh, or governing body, maybe you're only issue a temporary use permit for the first year. And then you reevaluate if there's concerns and then, you know, come back again for that second year with maybe something more clearly as like a quote unquote site plan, even though it's a temporary use permit to kinda address issues that arise. Uh, and just to give context, right? So this isn't a year-round use, three hundred and sixty-five days a year or anything like that. It is a condensed period from June twenty-seventh to July seventh. So, you know, you're talking about what, ten, twelve days that it's in operation? And weekdays, you know, five to eleven PM? So it's not all working hours of the day on the weekdays and things like that. Um, but certainly recommendation that the governing body asks for additional details regarding how parking is gonna be managed. You know, I know there's a commitment that they've been working with the police on how police presence is gonna go and stuff like that. Maybe, you know, they need additional help with like traffic direction in the shopping plaza and circulation and, you know, if people are gonna be parking, you know, over by the Starbucks or something like that or by the Texas Roadhouse and walking through the site, you know, maybe there needs to be, you know, some additional help with traffic direction, you know? It's all recommendations you can make and ultimately it's up to the governing body to decide on, you know, what they stipulate in their approval with the permit.
That lower half of the LA Fitness lot, that typically is, unless it's BJ's and they're having like a massive sale, um, that lower half of that lot is not full, ever. So maybe that's a possibility for overflow.
Well, they said they have permission for that, yeah.
You're still gonna cross that access road.
I know, but it's, but.
At the certain times that they're doing it, like the five to ten, it's usually by then it's starting to quiet down. And my concern would be on the weekend.
So the concern is if the popularity grows on an event like this, whether or not we'll be overcrowded.
Yeah.
With a, uh, with a flash of cars and personnel coming onto the site and nowhere to go, right?
Yeah.
So that's, we, we have to present, you know, you'll, I like your idea, sir, of making sure that you have an A and B plan. You know, should that happen, uh, you can absorb that kind of activity.
Certainly, yeah. And I, I, I think part of the materials is also that they will have, yeah, I mean, I've always gone to the Monmouth County Fairs and there's always kids out there with the flashlights helping direct traffic and it, it just makes it work. Um, even when you go to the pumpkin patches for that short time of the year, there's always people out there helping you. So I think that's part of it. It's staff, make sure we have an overflow area. Those are the recommendations that I'm, that I'm hearing.
And we, we, we do, we do address the parking as far as helping, you know, assist with the parking. And we're also gonna have a designated drop-off area to alleviate traffic if people drop off people for the carnival itself.
That, that, that's good. And then, and then if it turns out to be that enormous, then maybe a shuttle and a, and a place where you run people back and forth from. Right, whether or not that is.
Or regroup for the next time. I mean, like Charlie said, we could recommend one year and reevaluate if it's a problem. We can maybe recommend the use of Soldier Memorial or something else.
You know, we, we have a good working relationship with the police department. And if there does become a parking issue and we have to adapt at that point in time, we will.
When they do Howl Day, it's quite a distance away from the Howell Parking Ride, which is on Old Detroit. That's a huge parking lot that's basically unused. And they run school buses that go from Howl Day back to the Parking Ride. It's probably the same distance from that Parking Ride to where your site's gonna be. It would, it would definitely alleviate the parking problem. And, and keep a lot of the cars away from that site too.
Yeah, but honestly, you think the majority of people are gonna try that first? I mean, listen, if it's me with three kids.
No, you're going.
The first place I'm going to park is at the movie theater. Then we might be going home if there's no parking because I'm not putting my three kids on the bus.
If you can't park there and you're, and you're coming from somewhere else and you're a little ticked off and it's a, a sign says, go to the Howell Parking Ride.
I might be going home with three screaming kids.
Well, that could be, that could be your too.
We're gonna be at the, at Lead Fest though if it's happening. We'll be there early to park.
I think one of the letters that was provided said there's gonna be four police officers on site?
Four, yes, four and then certain points.
Two inside, one at the gate and the other one is perimeter? Was that the, if I understood correctly?
Two patrolling, one at the open gate and one outside the gate.
Okay.
And it also says on here, a certified EMS individual will be stationed on the grounds during all event hours.
Great.
Uh, I would, if you're using overflow parking, I would think you have the need for additional officers at that point. Because if they're crossing that access road, I'm, I'm just weary of that.
Charlie?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's, uh, the circulation in the parking and how that's managed is gonna be like a key component of this. Like, uh, I know when we had the office, the SML's coming here to convert some of the retail space, pad sites on here to office space, there was concern about like with the climb zone and the Starbucks and like kids walking through and how coming off of Lanes Mill Road, that main circulation during, you know, right after work, people are in a rush to get to the BJ's to do their shopping before the weekend or to get gas and things like that. So certainly the further that like drop-off areas and like maybe cutting off some of the like access to the parking where you have to get into the site to then get into the parking might eliminate a lot of this crisscross and during those, those times.
That's why, that's why we widened the turnaround at Estelle Lane.
Yeah, people still cut through, uh, that shopping center all the time too. So just be mindful of that when we recommend it to council. If we recommend it to council, five, six o'clock, people don't wanna sit. That one U-turn coming from Lanes Mill, they cut right through to get out, you know, instead of busting around. So they'll go through, past LA Fitness, make a left and go back up to the traffic light on mine. I see it every day. Yeah, they make their own.
Just letting you know that there's, it's a busy area. And there may be some challenges.
Well, that's, that's understandable. Like I said, it's, we, we have a good working relationship with the police department. So whatever the recommendations are, and, you know, I'm retired police officer, so I'm keyword retired. So, um, you know, we'll listen to what the, the chief and the traffic units have to say.
Yeah. So Charlie, anything else that we, uh?
I mean, really, I think, um, maybe if a recommendation to the governing body might be, let's do a one-year temporary use permit with a possibility of the second year. Maybe they come back with something a little bit more formalized as far as like a circulation to address if there are any issues. Maybe this perfect world, this operates and there's no issues and it's fine and it's good and they come back and they get the second year. But if there are any issues, it kinda gives the town and the board to maybe make some additional recommendations, uh, you know, for the next year. Comfortable with that?
Mr. Clausen?
Yeah, we're comfortable with that.
I mean, I have a funny feeling this is gonna be very, very popular.
Let's hope so.
Agreed.
And, 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 you know, you just need to be prepared. And so I, I would think at the recommendation, you know, one year, and then we assess and see, and then you come, and you, you modify as you experience. And then you come back and then we do a two-year after that.
It seems completely fair. And, uh, the one thing I'm comfortable with is you're handing it over to people that are in charge of traffic for a living. So, uh, I think we, I think we're in good hands.
All right, go ahead. Mr. Roscoe?
Uh, I have four kids. And, um, the climb zone, you know, during the weekend is only people from Laywood. During the, the, the two months of the games, that, you know, that you want to do, I bet you it's going to be all Laywood, all Howell.
All Jackson?
Yes, especially Laywood.
Yeah.
That's the point to see where they're going to park. Especially the weekends. That's it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the, the Friday, you know, uh, with, uh, a certain portion of the Lakewood and Howl Community and Jackson, everything like that, you know, before sundown, there's a certain rush to get your business done before the end of the week. So, uh, to get your last minute shopping at the BJ's, you could be sometimes in a particular rush, you know, in that five to, to eight PM before sundown on a Friday critical period. So just things you're gonna have to monitor and work with police department to kinda tackle those hurdles as you, as you go along.
Certainly.
Okay, so do we have enough to recommend for council? Okay. Go ahead.
Somebody mentioned something about EMTs. How many, how many EMTs?
The letter that I got today just said an EMT.
An EMS is gonna be on site.
Wait, well.
No, I think she said.
No, it said.
I gotta find it again.
I think you're gonna need more than, my, my point is you're gonna need more than one.
I was just gonna say.
EMT. And, and how do they traverse through the crowd? Do they have a quick response vehicle, like a, like a Gator type vehicle that they can get to, get to? You know, sometimes moving around a big ambulance in, in a tight area isn't feasible. So you have to have like quick response type vehicles like, uh, well, Gator is coming to me, my, my mind.
We have a golf cart we have bringing with us.
Yeah, that won't, they ain't gonna cut it. The, 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 an EMS Gator has a backboard on, has attached backboard. It, it's set up to, you know, handle a, a, a medical situation.
And I'm gonna assume that you'll have like a schematic of like how many rides, um, places of where stands will be, all that kinda stuff as well? That would've been great, I see tonight if we could've.
And food, they're grabbing food, yes.
Do you have food?
Yes. Yes, yes, and we'll comply with all of the health department regulations.
Better be good sausage and peppers if it's there.
So that, that would be my recommendation. I mean, you would have to have more than one EMT and, um, some kinda quick response vehicle.
You can speak to that.
Usually, and it's, and I've done this, it's, I just came from Alabama and they were on-site because they were required from the county. So, uh, I didn't know what I was getting into here because I don't work with Howl before. So that can be easily rectified. We get with Lead, Nick, and we basically hire them to be on-site, just like we do with the police. So definitely, um, something that can be easily rectified with hiring them. And then to come back to you with what we call a lot layout, where the rides will be placed, the bathrooms, the emergency exits could be, the food stands for some of you gentlemen. Uh, everything would be, and that's pretty, we could bring that when we, uh, the next time or.
Well, yeah, but we presented to council and certainly working with the, with the fire department.
Can I just interrupt for a minute? There's no presenting to council? Here's what happens. If the board makes a recommendation tonight, tomorrow I type up a resolution that goes to the clerk and all they do is memorialize it.
Okay.
So I need specific recommendations and if you have some kind of plan.
Well, that changes things.
I need it to attach to that resolution so we know exactly what's going on.
That's why it would've been really great if that was all together because then it would make it a lot easier for us to be able to give you some of that advice and.
What, can I ask, what do you have currently, Eileen?
I currently have all the information that you guys got in your package and that's it.
So we don't have much.
So we have to give you recommendations.
Well, if, in other words, like if you read this and I just read to you, a certified EMS individual will be stationed on the grounds during all event hours. If you want three people there, I have to know that because I have to put that in the resolution because that's what we're gonna have to go by and say.
I would say, I would say four EMTs and two quick response vehicles and, and a bus. An ambulance.
Yeah, can we get like the rescue squad station there, like a manned ambulance?
I'm sorry?
Like a manned ambulance there? Like I, I believe all the high school football games, the Halltown Ship Rescue Squad or something of that nature is there with a staffed ambulance in case something happens.
That's, that's, that's usually, you know, we can, we can, we can work with the, you have paid EMS or do you have?
There's paid and volunteer in town. We're blessed to have the best of both worlds.
So we can work with, with EMS and we can get a bus there on-site, which.
That works for me.
We have an ambulance with a crew of two.
Yeah, that works for me.
They would be on-site at all times.
Like with the fire, the fireworks thing, we had the schematic and the ten.
When, when could I make that to you? I could, I don't have it with me now.
The next council meeting is not till June eleventh, so I just really need it before then. But I don't know if it would be helpful, like we have June, hold on a minute. Cause now I got too many papers on my.
Yeah, well, I mean, I wanna hear what I have. I'm gonna have to have, please, that'd be a commitment.
Charlie?
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Based on some of the board members' experiences, you know, this might not be the right place for us.
I mean, you, you can ask for whatever additional information you see fit to kinda make you feel a little bit more warm and fuzzy about this. Um, you know, I don't think, from what I'm hearing, I don't think anyone is really opposed to like what they're doing and how it's supporting and who they're supporting or anything like that.
Absolutely, we're concerned of creating, you know, a, an event that cannot be absorbed by the local site.
What about like a larger space like a Soldier Memorial? Is that even an option?
I think there's still sports going on. That's part of the problem.
Oakland Park?
I mean, there's gotta be a better option. That would provide you guys less litigation. I mean, it seems like we need a lot of information to recommend to council.
I agree. I think we needed to see kinda what the layout was. We need to see the flow. You need to see, there's, like, we have, we have, we have other entities that come with that information and it makes it so much easier for us to see exactly what everything is and we can have a better idea of what that's gonna all come, become. Um, and we don't have that. That's, I think that's the biggest concern. I mean, cause listen, like we, you know, let's take a trunk or treat the first year. That, then they moved it, then they moved it, now it's at Soldier. It's because it, well, alright, but. But that's my point. That's our point. We're trying to avoid that.
Mr. Chairman, what about getting more information and then processing or considering it at the June tenth meeting?
Can we do that?
Do they have enough time then?
It's gonna be tight because the next council meeting's the eleventh.
Yeah.
But I might be able to alert the clerk that I'm gonna have a resolution one way or the other that morning and it's just gotta be done. I can't hold it for their next meeting because if it gets canceled, then they're out of luck.
Correct.
So, and that's why we pushed for them to be here tonight.
Well, I'm glad because, you know, we think this is great, but we also think that the, the lot might be undersized for the type of event that we're putting on.
Right, and that's what I meant by like, if there's a condition that they need overflow parking somewhere, I should really be able to put that in there that overflow parking will be at such and such. And I don't have that information, so.
Is three hundred by three hundred a normal size for you guys or you do bigger? You have bigger lots?
We do the biggest state fairs in the country and.
What, what would that be?
Uh, Georgia National Fair is six hundred acres.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, something a little small. I mean, is three hundred by three hundred kinda small?
No, sir, it's for a springtime carnival of this type is perfect.
Where would you normally hold an event like this? Like, does this shopping center fit what you usually do?
At this time of the year, yes.
Yeah?
We're, we're at the Paramus Mall right now with twenty rides that would be similar to the twenty rides coming here.
I feel like the Paramus Mall's parking lot is significantly bigger than this.
Have you, have you been there? Have you been to this?
No, sir.
I feel like.
You, you should probably, it's right over here. You should probably check it out.
I, I will, once, um, the, getting you the paper, that would, I could have that here in thirty minutes. With, because with the, the, what we call a lot layout, with, based on three hundred by three hundred, we know what we would be bringing here, so.
Is there a way to zoom in on this so we could maybe show them a little better the layout of that parking lot and the available space?
I'm sorry, like how many rides, how many game booths?
Eighteen to twenty rides.
Cause that would be important to put in. And how many game booths?
Uh, sixteen to twenty and then eight food stands. Is, that's normal for what we, we call a unit.
What's your largest ride? That's a lot of rides.
Um, the largest ride that would be coming here would be a Himalaya type ride.
So you guys would be set up in there, correct?
This entire?
Which would eliminate the majority of that parking. All right.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
This would eliminate the majority of that parking, right? So now you're left with LA Fitness, which is open and operating, I believe until ten. So now you're left with L A Fitness, which is open and operating, I believe until ten, which would be the same hours. You have customers in and out, and then you have the BJ's parking, which is gonna be in use until I believe eight or nine. It's tight. And you guys said between five and eight hundred people daily? Rough idea on a car count, maybe? Just, and I'm not trying to be difficult, I think what you're doing is awesome and I wanna be there with my kids. But I don't wanna see you guys constrained by this, A, and have a problem for the next time when you wanna do it and people are mad or up in arms. Like, people have mentioned, there have been complaints just from the movie theaters operation, let alone a carnival there and all the noise associated with it.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
The gentleman mentions that it's a springtime, but Ju- June twenty sixth to July tenth.
It's summer.
Kids are out of school. It's, it's the, it's the summer for us.
Certainly.
So.
I'm listening, uh, I'm listening and I'm thinking.
I mean, it might make sense to go down, it's, and you haven't been there yet, I would, I would really take the ride over there and just walk it during a busy time of the day over there or around the time you're thinking.
Go there at five o'clock.
You'll, you'll see what we're talking about. We're just trying to be helpful, cause I think it's an awesome event, I, I really do.
It's just that we don't have a parking garage, we don't have five stories or four stories where we can absorb, you know.
And there's not any open fields there. The other thing you gotta worry about is right behind there is I believe it's Castle Court. You don't want people parking on the street in front of everybody's house and walking up now. Then you have the school right behind that, what if people are parking in there? I think you're gonna run out of parking, I think, I think what you're doing is such a great cause, you're gonna have, A, the residents of Howell who are desperate for things to do on weekends with their kids, show up in droves and then all of the people supporting what you're doing.
Go down further on that road, that, that fence, that fence there I was talking about.
It's up to the right.
Going towards the gas station, yeah, up in there.
Yeah, right there.
That's another pad site that a building was supposed to be built.
Yeah, that was a, they came before the board had switched that retail to office space.
Yes.
So it's base paved, but I don't believe there's no search for payment, there's no striping or anything like that right now.
They store their, uh, snow.
Snow removals there.
It's fenced too, and they have to take down the fence.
I mean, just remember, this isn't like an open shopping, open parking thing, like there's other cars accessing the businesses in there. And there's just nowhere open to park, other than there.
Mr. Roscoe, you've got something?
The sixty or seventy percent of the parking lot of L A Fitness is empty. It's empty, you just walk like a twenty-five steps and you're there. Ask permission to the L A Fitness.
Well, if Greenleaf, if Greenleaf is saying yes, I think you're good, which.
Do have that permission.
But I know like.
It's empty.
But National Night Out, National Night Out, it is not empty and they don't have nearly that many people in there and it, it's dangerous in there when it's that crowded. I, listen, I think it's great, I wanna go wherever it is, if you guys could make it safe, but I don't know if we have the ability to, to make the recommendations for council to vote on it right now.
If, if, if I may, so, I said I was retired, um, I'm a retired police chief from, from Morris County. I did twenty-six years, the last twelve is my, as the chief of police. And we have carnivals in, in our town, Kenalon, in similar sized lot, which is actually the high school parking lot that we had our, our carnivals. And we had the same concerns as far as parking. We addressed those parking issues from the law enforcement traffic part of this. And what we did was, um, we never had to bus anybody in for the, for the carnival. But what we did is we had adjacent parking areas where we had officers, like you were concerned, and I think by seeing this, where you concerned about the people walking across that one section, which looks like it's an exit part there. Alright, getting an officer there to be able to cross the people lit up, so that it's nice to see.
Yeah, so it almost.
Yeah, but where are the additional parking?
People are gonna park in that Lowe's.
Totally, yeah. But also, if you think about like for Halliday, they're crossing, they're crossing five forty-seven, so.
Yeah, but it's shut down there.
Well.
Shut down at Victory Road. Or not Victory, um.
Maxim Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, but my point is, is that prior to that, it's still semi-open, so, you know, so, you know, they're just gonna figure it out.
Yeah, but I think it's on us to figure out, am I wrong, Eileen? What we say is what gets presented, so it's on us right now.
That's why I think we need more info.
On us right now to iron it out.
So.
Well, for sure, coordination with the local police.
My, my, my point was, is that when there was, when there was an issue, we adapted to it. And not knowing, I don't know the area.
There's no open space there to park, it's all shopping centers.
But if it's, if it's the traffic pattern in the parking area, you know, we, like I said, is we would abide by what, whatever the police department requests for that night or for that day, to make sure that we keep everybody safe, because safety is, you know, that's our business.
Yeah, I get it.
So whatever we need to do to make that right, we would, we would make that right.
There's just, there's no open fields or open lots to put any cars there, it's all businesses. Yeah.
I don't think we have enough to do this.
Charlie, we don't think we have enough to do this.
So, you know, I think you heard Eileen say we have another meeting before the end of June and then the governing body, the council, has another meeting. If you feel like you might wanna see some additional information from the applicant, just to kinda make you feel a little bit better from a circulation perspective and parking, I gotta imagine if, if, um.
The traffic, you know, I think they should be discussing this with the traffic safety officer.
And we have an amazing police department, they're well versed in all this, if they come in and they say, this is perfect, it's good to go, I believe them.
Yes.
But we got nothing.
Yeah, we, unfortunately.
Certainly a typical layout of internal to the carnival space, I think presenting that to the board just so they can see how circulation is, where the access point is, like getting it away from that main driveway through, so people are having to come into the site and there's not a queue or people, you know, on pedestrian crossing all over the place, I think would improve things. Um, just a question, is there any, is there any like a, like a beer tent or anything, or any liquor sales or anything that has proposed with this?
It's a drug, it's a drug thing.
Yeah, yeah, well, I've been to, I've been to, I've been to P B A events where there's, uh, you know, those kinds of tents. You know, if you go to, ever go into the, um, Manasquan Fireman's Fair, you know, they have a tent like that there, you know, and it's all for good cause and everything like that, you just ask the question.
So John, what are you thinking, John? You, you're sitting there and you're saying, hey.
I mean, Mr. Pope represents Lowe's, um, additional officers, I mean, that could also count for some overflow. If you have, I mean, there's, uh, there's a crosswalk there, there's a sidewalk there as well, uh, so you wouldn't have people just kind of walking through, uh, no man's land. Uh, maybe he could put in a call on behalf of your clients, I think the board is, is, their concern is justified in the sense that, you know, uh, when it gets to be overwhelming, you can't control everything, uh, no disrespect to the, uh, former chief. You know how, you know how things get with these car, people just run all over the place and we're just trying to minimize any of that. Um, you know, some kind of plan just so that they can see what's actually going on is always beneficial. Uh, you're asking, uh, this group to, to make a decision blindly without anything, you know, just to say, yeah, it's gonna work out. It's, it's pretty difficult to, to, to get behind something like that, so, uh, you know, just something, uh, you know, you even have Walmart, even though that's a bit of a stretch, uh, right across Route nine, even though I wouldn't wanna see anybody crossing Route nine. Lowe's is probably as far as, uh, I, I would suggest, uh, maybe making some kind of, uh, concession to see, they have a pretty large lot as well. Uh, hey, just a question, and I know it kinda contradicts what you're trying to do here, is there any plan, uh, to be able to turn people away at some point? If it gets to critical.
You're asking for trouble.
Listen, I mean, there's no space, there's no space, you're not gonna.
Listen, Brick, Brick's done it at Brick Day, they've done it, they've had a sign.
There's only certain amount of entry points into that plaza any which way, so if you, if you put somebody in there, uh, at each, uh, at each entrance and exit and say, hey, listen, there's no space, you got, you gotta keep moving.
Oh, I see what you're saying with cars, not with your, with your.
Right, I mean, not pedestrian traffic, obviously, but I'm saying with cars, you just, you gotta keep it going at some point.
What's your opinion on the space, John? I mean, you're in the area every day, you know, you know this town, are we looking into this too much, or?
No, see, I mean, and once again, I'm guessing it was a guesstimate, six hundred, I don't know, the number could be more, the number could be less. Uh, if you count the spaces, you don't have six hundred cars, especially taking away, uh, that area for, for rides. So I think the concern is justified, given how busy the other businesses are in that plaza, uh, especially at peak times, at five o'clock or on the weekend, um.
And the time of year, John?
Uh, time of year, absolutely, and as, uh, Mr. Stanton stated, uh, you know, it's gonna be the only game in town and everybody's gonna be looking to do something, uh, so you're, you're definitely gonna attract, it's gonna be a well, uh,
Well attended event.
Benefit, uh, but you want safety first, so I, I, I think the concerns of the board are justified.
And the township is very pro-police and pro-law enforcement, they are going to back you, they're gonna come out, there's no question.
We just need to have a plan.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you're hearing any opposition to the operational and the use and what it's serving. I think it's more so to make sure that everyone is set up to succeed with this, the township, you know, lead, um, the visitors, cause, you know, more traffic, more cars, more vehicles, more pedestrians, just creates more potential for, you know, things to go wrong and I think we're just trying to make sure that everyone's going in the right direction to, towards success on this.
Mr. Clausen?
So.
We need you to help us.
Understood, so, cou- couple of things to help me do that. Um, number one, is it conceivable that we could come back here on the tenth and give you some more information?
For us it is, is it for you, though?
Well, I, I, that's, now, the second thing I'm gonna ask is could I have about five minutes so I could go do some logistics with my guys and, uh, and see what I can do?
Yeah, absolutely, Eileen, can we take five?
Sure.
Okay. Board's taken?
Board's gonna take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Back at twenty after nine.
Okay, we're back, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so just carry us, please, to the tenth, alright? In, in the interim, uh, we will provide certainly a sketch of the parking lot and I made some initial recommendations. Um, in situations like this, where I know I'm going home, I don't try and solve problems then, I think it's better when you think about it a little bit. But things that cross my mind, so that you know, that I'm thinking of doing, is not only, when, I think when you get a sketch, then we'll have a better handle on what parking's left over, and then we can do some counts, we get some ideas of how many spaces are actually out there, so we're not talking in the abstract. Um, I talked to John about communicating with the police department now, getting a sense from them, what they think it would be like, how it would work, how we could work with them, so we could bring that information back. With any luck, maybe we can get an officer to come back with us, um, and kinda give you some of that assurance, maybe that you were looking for. Uh, so sketch, um, do some counts, either internally or maybe get a traffic guy so that they can quantify it a little bit better. You're used to hearing that kinda testimony, you understand it. Um, get a sense of how the parking lots are working, um, you know, during the day, during different times of the day, almost like doing traffic counts. Um, and then come back here and make a better explanation to you, so that you're more armed to make a recommendation to council. And, um, the way that I look at it, uh, what I just advised my client, i- if you said yes tonight, it wasn't happening until the eleventh anyway. So we might as well go and use that time to make sure we give you, uh, some better information. I'm sorry to put you up to, to, you know, having to have a resolution ready, uh, but hopefully by then there'll be a, a lot more information that we can start getting that worked in there, so, so that's my plan.
And we just, we just have a temporary use permit for firework sales, which coincidentally is gonna happen at the same time, but not at that location.
Gotta hope not.
And when they give it to us, they give us like, here's where the tent's gonna be and they tell us what's in the tent. So your sketch should really show all your rides, where your game hoots are gonna be, so that, like, they have an idea then when I send this to them that this is where everything's gonna work and fit and stuff like that.
And I think what's even more important on that sketch is to show you the circulation pattern inside, uh, so you can see how we're, we're able to get around and move around.
So, and Mr. Chair, so, and I don't know, um, you know, the likelihood of a representative from the police department coming to the next meeting, but maybe in the interim before the next meeting, we could coordinate like a meeting with the, someone from the traffic safety unit, you know, someone from the, the towns engineer's office, I could certainly be there if the board, uh, and the applicant requested. Just to kind of, certainly a blessing from the traffic safety unit on like, we've reviewed this and we think that this is gonna work or at least we have a game plan for how it's gonna work, might ease, you know, your concerns when we come back here on the tenth, to know that it's been thought and vetted and everything like that, just a suggestion.
That's a good one.
A copy of the carnival permit might help as well, cause I know the fire chief was looking for that.
They will have that.
Okay.
Everything you mentioned, he.
They are.
And just to clarify, guys, I think you're doing an awesome thing. I don't want you to think I'm sitting here specifically trying to tell you this is not a great thing, just we don't have much here. And if it's on us, we gotta do better on our end.
And then.
And I hate to say, if a traffic safety gets notified of every application, including this one, and I didn't get any comments, so.
Okay, um.
People came together very quickly.
So, so, Soldier Memorial, um.
I think that would be a great fit.
July second, so the, uh.
That might be, yeah.
The Howell P D. will probably be pretty busy on, on that day.
Yeah.
You know, over at Soldier Memorial, so, yeah, um. If you can give us more information that we can be able to put it on pa- on paper and move it forward, that would be great. You know, so we're concerned, just a little bit, only because of the success, you know, and, uh, I, I just don't want a disastrous after-action report, you know, saying what we didn't do and how do we push this out there and it becomes a colossal, you know, nightmare for us. So if we do our due diligence, that's what we need to do.
Got it, understood.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, I, 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 I think we, we noticed for this, right?
No, you didn't.
We didn't notice?
Notice was not required.
Okay, alright, so we don't need an announcement, right, Andy? Okay.
No announcement.
No announcement.
Thank you very much, everyone, appreciate the input. We'll do better.
Thank you.
Have a great night, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Let Eileen know, okay? Alright, Eileen, when's the next meeting?
June tenth.
Okay, June tenth it is.
Eileen, I'll send your notice, I won't be here, I don't either.
I was gonna try not to be here, too.
I will be in England.
I know Mr. Hughes won't be here, cause I already had that. Yeah, uh, Gateway Industrial is a use variance and they were carried to that night and Mr. Pope was requesting the whole meeting and he was promised it.
You know what?
Look at him.
I will be here, I need a full board.
I'll still be in England.
I'll be in Atlantic City.
So who's not?
Should we go get them before they leave?
So who's, who's not gonna be here on the tenth?
About half the board.
Me, Glenn and apparently.
I'll, I'll, I'll drive up for it.
And is, what did Jose say?
Oh, yes, I was, Katie.
Oh.
Okay.
I'll be here.
So if it's just the two, we, if we had, everybody else committed, then we have seven.
I mean, I mean.
If you wanna push and see if we can get Howell High School to back up, Mark, Mark will.
That's up to them.
That is up to them, that's because they have to get a lease agreement from.
That's true, that's true.
And they're running out of time.
Yeah, I'm sure notice is.
Well, either that or it's a plan B for next year.
Okay, so, June tenth is the next meeting, it's gonna be, uh, an all-nighter.
Yes. Just one application and this one, so.
Oh, okay.
But the other one is probably gonna take all night.
Yeah.
So we pull these guys first.
Yes, and hopefully you'll be.
Alright, so, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn? We got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Goodnight, guys.
Goodnight.